Call the meeting. Call the meeting to order, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and the Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grande.
Here.
Mrs. Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Pallack.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. Good evening, everybody and everyone at home. It's nice to have a full crowd. We are going to move to public comment on agenda items only, and I see that no one has signed up, so I move to close that portion of the meeting. And we will move to, we're going to skip the committee reports and go to some presentations, best part of the meeting. We have some presentations tonight. What do we want to start with? Oh, here we go. Sorry about that. Student of the Month, Ms. Ingles.
Good evening, everybody.
I know, it sounds... Here, would you like to use mine? Or Mr. DeVitas?
Good evening. I'm pleased tonight to honor some of our distinguished students. I want to start with honoring our Students of the Month. These are the recipients for September, October, and November. I want to start with just a little bit of a backstory regarding Student of the Month. Each month of the school year, we choose a character trait that we would like to highlight that aligns with our Seven Mindsets curriculum. The students we recognize tonight have been chosen by their teachers as students who exemplify these traits. In September, our theme was responsibility. We were looking for an individual who takes accountability for their actions and their commitments to school very seriously. The staff were asked to nominate students who were well-prepared for class, complete assignments, and follow directions by working collaboratively with teachers and peers. Our September Student of the Month is Bobby Kelly.
Come on up, Bobby. Why don't you stay right here so we can get your picture with everybody?
October's theme was Everything is Possible. We were looking for a student who demonstrates positivity in all situations. We asked our staff to nominate students who have positive attitude, always seeing the glass as half-full, embracing change, and always striving to reach new heights. Our October Student of the Month is Ian Metting. And November's theme was Attitude of Gratitude. We were seeking a student who always acknowledges goodness in people and situations. We asked our staff to identify a student who has overcome obstacles, shows appreciation, and acknowledges their gratitude for their opportunities in school and community. Our November Student of the Month is Gabriella Florentino.
You get in the picture.
You're welcome. Why don't you all stand together? We're going to get a picture of you.
Okay. Get in there. Nice.
Thank you. So nice. I have another one. So, on November 17th and 18th, Cedar Grove High School presented the play Puffs. We all know the story of the magical boy who spent seven years in wizard school. While Puffs was not about him, rather it was a story about the other students who went there too. As a lover of the boy wizard story, I was not sure how I'd feel about this parody. However, I was blown away by the incredible performance from our students. The show was funny and clever while delivering a heartfelt message that there is a hero in all of us. I am so proud to recognize the outstanding accomplishments of our students. Tonight, we are going to recognize the advisors, cast and crew chiefs of the production. The production was a joint effort for those who sit here before you and so many who worked tirelessly behind the scenes. I want to say thank you to everybody who had a hand in making this play so successful. At this time, when I call your name, please come up and receive your certificate and stay in the front so we can grab a picture together. Adriana Caceres. Yes, that would be great. They're in alphabetical order. Isabella Catallo. Aaron Dodarian. Eddie Dodarian. Eddie's not here. Adam DeVito. Jesse Franks. Jesse Franks, I'm sorry. Angelina Hashimashoshi. Kaylin Louiezy. Emily Peer. Emily Rattell. Kaitlyn Sherbin. Eric Silverman. Jack Simon. Michael Palmieri. Benjamin Weiner. Our crew chiefs, Gia Del Muro. Sienna Giordano. Nancy Guan. Philip Kaminsky. Maddie McNeil. Nicole Pastula. Samantha Voss. I would also like to acknowledge and ask our producer Jackie Leibowitz, our assistant producer Mike Jankarelli, our tech advisor Tyler Koch, artistic advisor Ms. Jessen, and our set crew advisor Tom Catallo to also join us as we recognize you for your incredible hard work. Thank you so much for all of your time and dedication. We're going to get a picture of you all together. at 6:30. We would love to see anyone...
Six o'clock art show.
Six o'clock art show, yes. The art teachers are displaying some of Semester One artworks in the lobby at 6 o'clock, and then 6:30, our winter concert. Thank you.
Great. Okay.
Good evening. I'm here to recognize two of our fall athletic championship teams from this fall athletic season. Before I do so, I just want to congratulate all of our fall athletes, coaches, and teams on another very successful fall athletic season. Proud to say again, all of our fall athletic teams qualified for state tournaments, had a great season. Our girls soccer team made it to the sectional semifinals for the second year in a row. Our girls cross-country team finished second in the Super Essex Liberty Division Championships, and our girls soccer team again finished second in a very tough Super Essex Liberty Division Conference. So congratulations to all of our fall athletes, coaches, and teams again. But two teams stood out from the rest, winning some championships this year. I'm going to start with our girls volleyball team, who captured the 2023 Super Essex Conference Colonial Division Championship. They had a division record of 11 and 2, overall season record of 20 and 9, and reached the program's first-ever state sectional championship game, so they had a historic run there. So, great job, girls. As I call you up, I'm going to read through the proclamation. When I call you up, come stay up here so we can get a picture. This is a proclamation congratulating the Cedar Grove High School Girls Volleyball Team on their championship. Whereas during the fall athletic season of 2023, the Cedar Grove High School Girls Volleyball Team won the Super Essex Conference Colonial Division Championship. Whereas this team had a Super Essex Conference Colonial Division record of 11 and 2, whereas this team had an overall season record of 20 and 9 and reached the program's first-ever NJ SIAA state sectional championship game. Whereas the 2023 team roster was Valentina Balistreri. Isabella Coletta. J.C. Lynn Nardiello. Amanda Eustace. Stefania Izzo. Ella Laforja. Kirsten Walter. Dia Bavishi. Blanca Boniello. Daniela DiAngelo. Sullivan Tensa. Leah Weinstein. Caitlin O'Connor. Isabella Stoles. And our coaches, head coach Will Leonard. And assistant Deanna Decourt. Just want to congratulate our Cedar Grove High School Girls Volleyball Team one more time and wish them the very best of luck in the future. Congratulations. Our next team I would like to congratulate is our football team for capturing the 2023 Super Football Conference National Red Division for the fourth season in a row. They finished with a National Red Division of 4-0 and had an overall record of 8-2. This proclamation congratulating Cedar Grove High School Football Team on their championship. Whereas during the fall athletic season of 2023, Cedar Grove High School Football Team won the Super Football Conference National Red Division Championship for the fourth straight season. Whereas this team had a perfect Super Football Conference National Red Division record of 4-0, whereas this team had an overall season record of 8-2. Whereas the 2023 team roster, and I'm going to try to call the guys who are here, Nico Zunick. Jerry Tarja. Xavier Anghar. Pierce Asfog. Nick Testa. Steven Paradiso. Nick Russo. Jackson Maurice. Connor Kearney. And seniors Giovanni Casilli. Jamie DeSilva. Ben DeChera. Bushoizaki. Lucas Droge. Nick Droge. Nick Genario. Jean Carlo Gonzalez. Robbie Hayes. Nick Iannicone. Bobby Kelly. Nick Robinson. Gianluca Tarja. Greg Vitale. And Peter Sanforrescu. I would like to once again congratulate the Cedar Grove High School Football Team and wish them the very best of luck in the future. Congratulations. Super Football Conference National Red Division for the fourth season in a row. They finished with a National Red Division of 4-0 and had an overall record of 8-2. This proclamation congratulating Cedar Grove High School Football Team on their championship. Whereas during the fall athletic season of 2023, Cedar Grove High School Football Team won the Super Football Conference National Red Division Championship for the fourth straight season. Whereas this team had a perfect Super Football Conference National Red Division record of 4-0, whereas this team had an overall season record of 8-2. Whereas the 2023 team roster, and I'm going to try to call the guys who are here, Nico Zunick. Jerry Tarja. Xavier Anghar. Pierce Asfog. Nick Testa. Steven Paradiso. Nick Russo. Jackson Maurice. Connor Kearney. And seniors Giovanni Casilli. Jamie DeSilva. Ben DeChera. Bushoizaki. Lucas Droge. Nick Droge. Nick Genario. Jean Carlo Gonzalez. Robbie Hayes. Nick Iannicone. Bobby Kelly. Nick Robinson. Gianluca Tarja. Greg Vitale. And Peter Sanforrescu. I would like to once again congratulate the Cedar Grove High School Football Team and wish them the very best of luck in the future.
You're going to have to make two rows.
None of them knew I did this until I did it. How it really happened.
Always happens.
Yeah.
That certainly is the best part of the meeting.
It's always fun.
Alrighty, we've kind of cleared out. Alright, so we're going to move on to committee reports, and we're going to start with Mr. Kelly tonight. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, how are you?
Very good, thanks.
Really three main things for the month of December. First thing, you guys know what Deck the Halls is? Just for people that don't know, it's a little competition between the grades. Every grade gets assigned a hallway, and whoever has the best decorated hallway for the holidays gets a little bit of money for prom, so you know. Seniors, we're hoping, this year, we're going all out. Second thing is Sebastian's Toy Drive, big thing we do in town every year in collaboration with the high school, with the Survivor family. So if you have any new unwrapped toys, please bring them to the vestibule in the front office at the high school, that'd be great. And then last thing, huge thing that we're starting to bring back this year, we had a conversation with the faculty and the students, like the student body, and we decided that for the months of, I think it's either March or April, we're bringing back lip sync, finally. Yeah. So participation, everybody wants to be there, it's going to be big again. We want to bring it back, make it permanent. I know COVID messed things up a little bit, got canceled for a few years here and there, but we're bringing it back, so we're excited, yeah.
Do we have an anticipated date or time for it?
I think somewhere between like the second and the third week of March, I think. Not a definite date yet, but soon. I know it's probably going to be after the spring show, I think, probably the week after the spring show. Yeah.
Awesome. Looking forward to that.
That's basically it.
Alrighty, well, thank you very much.
No problem.
You're free to stay or you're free to go. Your call.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Alrighty, so we'll move on to some... You too, Bobby. Okay, I'll start with the committee reports. Not too much to report this month or this week. We did not have a curriculum and instruction meeting this since the last meeting, but I know that Mr. Pallack and I had reported on the last one. And then the other one was personnel. Mr. Marzullo and myself attended a personnel meeting, and most of the personnel or all of the personnel resolutions tonight, they're pretty much standard-based resolutions that you'll see on the agenda, so nothing really beyond that to report on. Mr. Marzullo?
Just like you said, I attended that personnel meeting with you, which was, you know, standard. I also attended the facilities committee meeting with Ms. Keegan, which she'll report on shortly, but I just do want to take the moment to congratulate all those students that left. There's a big crowd here, but the football team, the volleyball team on their accomplishments. You know, best of luck to our winter athletes that the season's coming up, and also to our theater program that they put on that great show in the fall, and all our theater and art programs moving forward for the winter. And lastly, I'd just like to wish all our families, our students, our faculty a happy holiday, safe holiday season. Ms. Keegan?
Okay. Congratulations to all those fall sports teams and good luck to the winter teams. The facilities committee met earlier last week. We talked about how the rod grant has been finalized, so the process for the north end, south end electric upgrades and the HVAC upgrade in the gyms is going to start. How long that'll take will depend on how long it takes the materials to come in and get going with that. We also discussed the SR3 funds, what's left of those, and we're in the process of identifying items in need of attention that are also going to bring about a cost savings to the district. So you'll hear more on that in the coming month or so. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Grande?
Thanks. So I attended a finance committee meeting on December 8th, and there was a few different things that we discussed. The first was, I guess Mike's favorite, the annual audit. We discussed how the auditors are currently in the field and beginning some of their testing. We discussed continuity with the audit firm being used, as well as the signing partner. I'm anticipating their opinion probably sometime in January. To date, there haven't been any issues that have been identified, which is good news. We also discussed the comprehensive maintenance plan, which you'll see on, you know, in the materials here, and that's a plan that's required to be filed that outlines actual and projected maintenance work. We also discussed the ESER grant amendment, as CN just mentioned, and, you know, the potential options for using those grant funds. In particular, we emphasized, you know, first looking to spend money on items that will provide a recurring cost savings, you know, when considering, you know, what items to actually use that money on. So we had a nice conversation about that. And then lastly, just as usual, we looked at the bills, the bills listing. Nothing unusual to report on that, and that's it.
And just some further clarification on the ESER monies. There's, for people that are not in education, there are stipulations and requirements that you have to stay within in order to use those funds. You just can't arbitrarily use it for anything. And then the other stipulation is it's for projects that must be completed by the date that the ESER funds expire. So we have to be very mindful of projects that we are going to use that funding for, that we cannot be in a situation where the project does not get completed by the cutoff date, and then we lose those funds, and then are being held responsible for the work that we did start. So that just all goes into the whole process. It would be nice if we could just use the money and use it whatever we need, but unfortunately that doesn't, that's not the way it works, so just a little... What is happening here? Alright, so, alright, so we'll move on to... Mr. Rosso, Superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. Just a couple things. First of all, I just wanted just to share with everybody here that we had our PD on December 7th, which was really a pretty eclectic slate of things that teachers and the staff were doing in the district. It ranged all the way from, you know, our articulation to looking at artificial intelligence for the staff, preparing for the Arts Festival data in school counseling, as well as suicide prevention, SEAL by literacy, our security officers did scenario training, as well as building-based needs, and law throughout and equity throughout, gifted and talented. So that was a pretty comprehensive day that the staff took part in. One of the things that I, you know, we've been talking about, and I'll continue to highlight it, which is AI, artificial intelligence, and actually Ms. Ingles, which presented here tonight, she and I actually went to a roundtable over at Caldwell University, and we went through, we actually had a wonderful time where there was a big presentation about generative AI, which is what we are looking at and starting to embrace as a district. It's in its infancy stages, like I continue to say, but we learned so much more about it. The reality of it all is, we've been using artificial intelligence for more than 10-plus years in ways that we don't even realize it. So it's something that I'll just continue to talk about if there's ever any questions about it, I'd love to answer it, but our staff is starting to understand, excuse me, what it is, how it can be used in the classroom as an instructional leader, and how the students can use it. The other thing I'd like to just share is, I'd always like to, around this time of year, the McCullough family does a fundraiser for Kindness for Christopher, and if everybody recalls, it is a, there's a tragic story about a student, a child, Christopher, who lost his life, and the McCullough family, every year, not only here in Cedar Grove but throughout, they place donation boxes for pajamas for children. And again, the family did place them in each of our buildings, including LRP, with donations, and I just wanted just to recognize them because it's such a, you know, during this holiday season, which is a time for reflection on each of us, on each other, and doing, doing something for others, you know, putting ourselves second and putting others first, and they've done that. So I just want to give a shout out to them and thank them for that, and also just want to wish everybody a happy holidays and safe holidays, that you have wonderful times with your family and friends.
Thank you. And same to you. Alright, I'll get down to some business here. On page five, under the Business and Administrator's Report, can I have a motion for G1 through G8, please?
Sure.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under Superintendent Report, General Administration, can I have a motion for H1 through H6?
Some more. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under Superintendent Report, General Administration, can I have a motion for H1 through H6?
Some more.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Human Resources, can I have a motion for I1 through I7, but I would like you to strike I3 and replace it with addendum A1?
Some more.
Second.
And again, the family did place them in each of our buildings, including LRP, with donations. And I just wanted just to recognize them because it's such a, you know, during this holiday season, which is a time for reflection on each of us, on each other, and doing something for others, you know, putting ourselves second and putting others first, and they've done that. So I just want to give a shout out to them and thank them for that, and also just want to wish everybody a happy holidays and safe holidays, that you have wonderful times with your family and friends.
Thank you. Thank you. And same to you. Alright, I'll get down to some business here. On page five. Under the Business and Administrator's Report, can I have a motion for G1 through G8, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande?
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
Under Superintendent Report, General Administration, can I have a motion for H1 through H6?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande?
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
Yes. Human Resources, can I have a motion for I1 through I7, but I would like you to strike I3 and replace it with Addendum A1?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande?
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
Alright. Under Special Services, can I have a motion for J1?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande?
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
Yes. I open this portion of the meeting to public comment, means I see we have one person on the list tonight. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface your comments by stating your name, address, and municipality of residence. Please be mindful of your statement length, keep each statement to a three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. Please direct all comments or statements, questions, inquiries to the presiding officer. Presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it is too lengthy or abusive, obscene, or maybe defamatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. Mr. Kaweke? Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, David.
Oh, yeah.
You know, coming to board meetings on nights like tonight are really great. You know, you have to, you have to just look at what some of these kids are able to accomplish. And, you know, we don't, we don't have a big school system. It's incredible what we do here.
Thank you, I appreciate you saying that.
Well...
Our staff, our teachers, our administrative staff work really hard, our parents.
Oh, yeah. It's total, you know, everybody's in. I'm here for my granddaughters, and I need some information. The October 30th meeting, there was a presentation by Mr. Grande on a meeting he went to with the School Boards Association, and they were proposing a resolution to resist the banning of books. And you voted no. I have four questions. Why did you vote not to support the resolution? Why was there no discussion among the board? What does this mean to our kids and teachers? And what has this done to our reputation in Cedar Grove? So why didn't you support the resolution?
So, we didn't support the resolution. The resolution wasn't supported because when Mr. Grand... And please interject if I'm misspeaking. Mr. Grande attended the meeting. He asked some very specific questions regarding the resolution and the implications of it. And the questions were not answered. There was a lot of areas of the resolution that Mr. Grande felt were... What's the word I'm looking for? Just not specific enough, did not provide enough guidance. So he inquired about some questions. The questions that he inquired about were not answered, and so there was some room for error, and there was some room for gray, gray areas that we were not, or he was not comfortable with. So the decision to vote no was not a board's decision to vote no in that we were going to ban books. This board of ed is not banning any books. We have never banned any books. We will continue to provide, and please interject, Mr. Grosso, we will continue to provide our students with the materials that is age-appropriate, content-appropriate, which looks different in every building at every age level, and we are not in support of banning any books.
I appreciate that, and this actually answers my second question. This kind of discussion would have been extremely helpful two months ago, in terms of, you know, and I'll tell you why, because what I took away from it was, we're not, we're not going to support that, and we're not interested in resisting it.
But there was some clarification. Mr. Grande did give some clarification at the following meeting, clarifying that so that people did not take it away, take away from whatever was put out in the public that the board was banning books. We are not banning books. The bottom line is, we have never banned books, we have no intention on banning books. Our decisions to, what is in the classroom will continue to be done as they have in the past, and material will be age-appropriate and content-appropriate.
We really didn't even, didn't even get to the point where we could have a healthy discussion about the, about the proposal, because it was, like Dawn mentioned, it wasn't written that good. It was, you know, there was a lot of things that were out of scope, it didn't run to just the actions of the board, it ran to actions of the town, or, you know, parties outside of the school board. So it really, as I discussed in that follow-up meeting, it just was a very, you know, it wasn't a strongly worded proposal and one that we couldn't support as written. And I made all those comments at the, at the meeting itself, and none of them were addressed. So that's, that's the reason, I think Dawn, you summarized it very well.
Okay, I, you know, the other, the other part to this is, this is a, are we at a point where, and you would know this better than I would, are we at a point where we need to do something a little more, a little more, I wouldn't say concrete, but some kind of document, or something that kind of gives some guidance in terms of what we do with books? For example, I know there's a curriculum committee, right? And in terms of the materials that we use in school books, I believe the curriculum committee looks at those books, and those books get kind of bubbled up to that group, And can either be used or not used. And if there's a discussion in terms of what kind of material we're using and how, how we're going to use it, and all those things, kind of gets caught in there, so to speak. And I say caught, it's not a right, a good word, but in there somewhere. I'm just afraid, and I appreciate you saying we're never going to do this, but, you know, never say never. I mean, we could get to a position where somebody could get very, very angry at certain things, and, you know, we went through some things a couple, three years ago that, as a board, that really was not only upsetting, but just, it wasn't necessary. So all I'm saying is, is that if you believe that we're fine, and there's nothing else that needs to be done, and we're confident that we're able to manage the process of someone saying, "I don't think you should use," I don't know, Anne Frank's Diary, that we have a way to respond to that in a productive way, and not in a non-productive way. And, you know, that means a lot of us people get what they want.
We can, all I can assure you is that we will move forward in a productive manner, and discussion schools are ongoing.
Alright.
But I do appreciate your comments and your statements.
Alright, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Have a very nice holiday.
You guys too.
Thank you. Okay, I will close that portion of the meeting. Our next meeting will be after the new year, January 2nd. That will be our organization meeting. We're going to change the times a little bit. Public will be at 7:00 PM, and executive will follow after. Can I, a motion to close, call on agreement?
Aye.
Yes? Yes, okay. Have a very nice holiday, healthy new year, healthy and happy new year with your families. Everybody up here, everybody at home.
You too.
Thank you.